Good evening. We'll start the city council meeting this Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, and we'll begin with the roll call.
Okay, Hirsch.
Hi, are you here? You've never been first. This is the first.
Got you off guard.
Congrats. Johnson?
Here.
Lagaki?
Here.
Reeves? Hunt?
Here.
Schumacher?
Here.
Tukolski?
Here.
Paravello?
Here.
Brett?
Here.
And I'll check again, is Reeves, Alder Reeves there?
She might be absent and excused now that I think about it.
Okay. So we have my elders present, and we have Mayeski, Reeves, and Fognagas absent and excused.
Excellent. Thank you. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Nobody has signed up to speak for public comment. Communications and presentations. I'll start out with a couple here. Want to start out by, I don't know if you can see this proclamation here? I have a proclamation from Governor Evers for the state of Wisconsin recognizing our building inspectors. And this was issued to Steve Kittleson, who's our building inspector, and he's the president of the Building Inspectors Association. So we wanted to at least, you know, thank Steve for his work and his leadership on that group. It's a statewide organization. Obviously, it's been a busy year for pretty much everybody with inspectors. There is a shortage of inspectors as well. So if you know anybody that's looking to get into that field, send them our way, and we can tell them what it takes to get certified to be a building inspector. So that was a nice proclamation from the governor's office. Other communications that we have, you'll see it's EMS week. There's a proclamation in the packet. I'll also be doing a proclamation for the Pope selling that is typically done with the American Legion and VFW. So I'm going to meet with them, looks like either tomorrow or Friday, to do that proclamation. We expect that we'll have Chris Valchev from True North at the second council meeting in June to give us an update on the contamination report they've been working on and the material maintenance report that he'll be working with the DNR on. So that's something that we've been talking to Chris back and forth a little bit. We're not in a position to present yet. We're still awaiting some information. And he was not available for the next council meeting, so we're going to shoot for that second one in June. And we'll be kind of at a decision point anyway, as far as the agreement that we have with Kurt Brink, I believe expires in July. So we may be looking at extending that if the DNR is still going to be working on the material maintenance plan. So we'll keep you posted on that. You might have heard that at the Plan Commission, the most recent meeting, we had a SIP that was approved for Popeyes out of Kettle Park West. So we expect that they'll be doing some site work there at some point. We continue to have conversations with other developers on the residential housing out there as well. And it's 51 West. We're just wrapping up the final details. We're expecting to see the plat that we need to sign tomorrow. And then once the plat is signed, they can do some more work out there and get that project going. And then, let's see, what else? I think that's all I had. Is there any communications from others? Alder Person, Johnson?
Yeah, I just, I'm pretty sure that everybody has seen the email from AJ notifying us of the retirement of Chief Leck on August, or excuse me, July 8th, and I just wanted to just publicly acknowledge the chief's work and thank him for his service to the community.
Thank you, Greg. Any other communications from others? I know there's a ton of events going on some of you might be participating in, so look for those. I don't see anybody else that has any communications. We do have some communication and presentations from our finance director. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay. Well, the first thing is the update for you on the debt issue. If you remember, the council passed a parameters resolution several meetings ago, authorizing either myself or the city treasurer to accept the lowest bid results, lowest true interest cost. We did get four bids. The lowest was just under 3.4%. The highest was 22 basis points above that, so a decent spread between them. Because of the amount of premium that was bid by the bidding bidder, we actually lowered the amount of bonds from $5,480,000 to even $5.4 million. So because we have less that we're borrowing, the interest cost goes down a little bit. I don't know how much that saved, but every little bit helps. After that, I also did get an email the other day from Dave Verdman, the capital finance officer for the state. And he was also very pleasantly surprised at the amount that we got. So we're in the process of getting all the signatures done so that we can close on June 9th and be in debt for another $5.4 million. Any questions at all? Okay, that's item number one. Item number two, talking about the 51 West development. As you may remember, that development included an application to WIDA for low-income housing tax credits at the 9% level. They had applied for those sometime before December of last year, which was the deadline. And we were informed on May 10th that we did not get those credits from WIDA. WIDA actually did give out about $10.6 million, and the rest is on hold. Our understanding is that WIDA is holding back some of their money in case projects from the past two years that have been delayed due to COVID come in with higher prices. And if, you know, the market right now, construction costs are going out of this world. So they went very conservative. They may have more money that they're going to release right now, but we do not know for sure. So on May 23rd, the mayor and I had a meeting with the property owner, Mr. Dvorak, along with his agents, Lake Stone Property, Impact Seven, and Baker Tilly, to talk about next plan, what we're going to do. They're going to crunch numbers for a couple of weeks to see where their modeling suggests going. We may have to lower the number of low-income housing units. Currently, it was at 71 out of 84. That may change. That's the bad news. There would be lower workforce housing available potentially. The good news for us is because they'd be potentially going to market properties, the TIF will get cash faster. So from our point of view, it's good, but we are losing some, potentially losing some of the workforce housing. So our plan is after that group is done crunching their numbers over two weeks, we'll get the group back together again, see where we're at, and see what we can do. So we just wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions at all on that topic?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I have a reaction to your analysis that it's better for the city, yes, maybe financially for the TIF and for Dvorak, but not for the city with respect to workforce housing.
Correct.
And I really take an exception to that because we really need workforce housing. And we have to figure it out how this is going to happen because it's something that has been identified both in Dane County and in the city that we need that. So we have to figure out a way forward and not just look at the money aspect of it.
I apologize for the wording. You know, I'm strictly looking at the dollar values, but I absolutely agree with you that workforce housing is important too. So I apologize the way I phrase that.
And we certainly, you know, we feel the same way, Regina. We recognize the need for the workforce housing for people that need it, for our business, for our community, for our schools. And that's why we called the meeting yesterday with Bob and his team to look at other options. And hopefully, within a couple of weeks, you know, we'll see some results of that meeting or possibly get some more feedback from WIDA. Over the weekend, you might have heard that Governor Evers took some of the ARPA money to help WIDA with some of those shortfalls from the rising costs that Dave described. But we don't know if that is going to help free up any additional money that may be available, if it's even there. So we're still trying to get all the information, but at this point, we want to let you know at least that. As far as the 9%, they weren't able to secure that. But we are still looking at other options because we're not just going to say, well, that was the only, you know, basket we had our eggs in. We're looking at, you know, other ways to make this happen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I didn't mean to like call you out, Dave, but it's, this is live, and I just want to make sure that the rest of the city knows where we actually stand. And, you know, even if they have to delay it, you know, because they're building on the other side of the highway first, if they have to reapply next year and get it, you know, I think that is okay too just because I think, you know, we really need to, like, secure that that's workforce housing. So.
Yeah, and I believe they're all committed to it as well, and that's why they're looking at other options.
Thank you. That would be great.
Mayor, can I add on one comment to that, too?
Yep, go ahead.
Regina, if I remember, when we were talking about that in finance, I thought that that was our intent was that if they didn't get it on an initial round, that we would certainly be putting that in for a second round or even potentially a third. I think that one was a little bit more sketchy, but I thought at least to get two attempts on it before we were really starting to look for other options on that. I mean, because we did commit to having that sort of workforce housing available with that development.
Yeah.
I agree, Brett.
Yeah, the uncertainty has certainly thrown us for a loop. Even with our Housing Authority project at Greenspire, we're still hoping to, you know, to work with an outfit to continue to remodel those units at a quicker pace. But, you know, some of the options that we were pursuing there have been kind of slowed, you know, and we're still, we're still going to pursue them. But people are kind of taking a step back and trying to reassess things right now. But we're on top of it, and we'll do what we can to keep these things moving because we all know they're important.
Yeah, it's certainly a weird time, so.
All right. What else did you have?
Then the next thing that I've got is the ARPA update. I'm going to share my screen here. And it looks like, can everybody see that PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay. I was asked to put a PowerPoint together on ARPA, where we're at, and so that we can begin the discussions about continuing on and how to allocate everything. The, Mike Arnold, who was the interim finance director, had put together quite a detailed PowerPoint, but a lot of it became moot once the final rules came out, and I didn't want to bog you down with all those details. So I did a very high-level one from scratch. So I guess the first thing that I want to say is between ARPA and the state and local fiscal recovery, the SLFRF, those two are pretty much interchangeable. So if you hear either term, that's why. So what are some key dates going back, looking backwards? Well, in May of '21, Congress passed the ARPA legislation, which gave $130.2 billion to state and local governments. In May, they issued the interim final rules. I have no idea what an interim final means, but that's what they called it. If you're bored some nights and can't fall asleep, it's 151 pages. It ought to be a real page turner. June 25th, we got our first tranche of money, $686,312 rounded. And so we have that, and we're supposed to get the other 50% this, in June of '22. In September of '21, we had Baker Tilly invoicing us for $34.56. We asked them to do the lost revenue calculation based upon the interim financial, interim final rules. In hindsight, we wouldn't have needed that, but of course, you know, hindsight is always 20/20. Some more dates. In January, they issued the final rules. If you want the Reader's Digest version, it's down to 44 pages. It's another page turner for you. The rules became effective April 1st. So on April 29th, I had to do our first compliance report, and we elected to use the lost revenue category in that compliance report. I'll get to that in a little bit. But I had until April 30th, but at least I got it done under the deadline, so we weren't late for reporting. In May, we did pay Stoughton Utilities $110,000 for the lead service replacement project. So right now, we spent about $113,000 total. So what are some future dates that we have to have at looking at? Well, like I said, in June '22, we should receive the second half. And I'm going to have to do some reporting in April of '23 and '24, depending upon where we're at. But the important date is December 31st, 2024. That's the final day that the council can obligate funds by. So that's the hard deadline in the federal legislation that we have to get everything done. We got two more years of reporting in April of '25 and '26. And our last hard deadline, December 31st, 2026, we have to have all the funds expended by. So again, we could have the resolutions approved in December of '24 at the latest and write the checks two years later at the maximum. And then I've got one more final report due April of '27. So what can we spend the money on? We've got to look on eligible use categories. So we can either have those with more restrictions and more reporting requirements, looking at public health expenditures, negative economic impacts, providing premium pay, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Or we can go with fewer restrictions and simplified reporting to replace the lost public sector revenues. Came kind of a no-brainer for me to do the lost revenue calculations, which means every dollar that we get in ARPA funding, we can spend on whatever we want to. So if we want to invest in a competition to have a hubba bubba versus bubble yum, bubble gum, and which blows the best bubbles in terms of the city, we can do that. I hope we wouldn't do that, but that's an option that we could do. What can't we spend the money on? We can't reduce the tax levy. We can't deposit monies into a pension fund. We can't pay debt service, and we can't pay any legal settlements or judgments. Kind of a big one, we can't put in money into a rainy day fund or financial reserve. In other words, we can't increase fund balance because of it. And an important item to note, we have to pay somebody. We have to issue a check, and it can't be a check to ourself. I mentioned that we paid Stoughton Utilities. That's because Stoughton Utilities actually paid for the project and all the lateral connections and everything else, and we're just giving Stoughton Utilities the money in their checking account. So what are our next steps? How do you, as the council members, want to spend the remaining $1.26 million? That's the $20 million question, if you want to call it that. The committee as a whole met in June and September of '21 and had a matrix of 46 different ideas. And those meeting packets are available online, including that matrix. Other ideas have been talked about since then, and I believe that there's one later on the agenda for this evening. But a high-level recap of that matrix is that we were going to look at broadband accessibility and affordability, supporting nonprofit agencies, and we're talking about potentially doing that through a distributing agencies such as Community Era, Community Found, excuse me, Stoughton Era Community Foundation. Another high scorer was the city buildings for maintenance or enhancements. And another high-ranking one was for ambulance replacement for our EMS department. So I put the fiscal recap in here, just showing where all the monies came in. So far, at least through June, we have almost $33 in interest that we've earned on that $686,000. So take that into account, too. You know, you've got a lot more money than you thought you had. So one of the plans that we're proposing is that at the next few city council meetings, it's going to be a standing agenda item to have the ARPA discussion and possible awarding of the funding. So we thought we'd start with the high-level presentations on those high-scoring areas that were in the previous slide so that we can have various people come in and do their sales pitch. And then we could potentially do the awarding after the presentations occur. Of course, the council can do whatever they want. Maybe they want to vote on those presentations at that night. You know, it's up to you how it goes. So I'm going to open up the floor to you guys. Do you have any questions? Start the discussion. Let the fun begin, folks.
Thank you, Dave, for a great presentation. And I think you captured everything from our meeting, and I greatly appreciate that and putting it all down.
Thank you.
So I think what we, we had a meeting with Dave and the mayor and Lisa Reeves to try to discuss the next actions, and Dave has kind of outlined it beautifully in the slide presentation by looking at the matrix that you guys had all ranked back in, I think, September. And so instead of having another lengthy committee of the whole meeting, we thought we would bring in presentations for the next number of weeks during council meetings so we're not taking up more time, especially during the summer months. But as Dave says, we want to kind of pick your brain right now. If you agree with how we kind of are thinking about this. I know that Gary is online. Something has come up that, you know, is in need of potential ARPA funds, and that was the Innovation Center, and that also did rank relatively high in our rankings last fall. But let's discuss. I mean, at that time, back in September, you guys wanted not to do piecemeal kind of obligations. But so I guess I want to know if you guys are still feeling that way or how best do you guys want to proceed?
Regina or Dave, do we know if the categories from which we generated the, our high-level priority things, have those categories changed materially with the differences in the final rulings versus when we were originally investigating our ideas?
Those categories still exist if you do not want to use the lost revenue calculation. But under the lost revenue calculation, which gives us the most flexibility, we can honestly spend it on anything we want. Originally, the legislation did not allow road construction, for instance. Under the lost revenue, we could spend it all on road construction if we wanted to. So it gives you much more flexibility. We don't have to stay in those categories. We can if we want to, though.
Okay. Knowing that, I think that that might put some of those other thoughts and ideas that we had back on the table because I know some of them were no-no's at first. But if that opens that back up, we might be able to consider some of those that we thought were off the table prior.
Yeah, initially, we could only use a certain level for lost revenues. I want to say it was like $700,000, somewhere around there. But with the latest and final ruling, they opened that up, up to $10 million, which obviously were under the $10 million, so therefore, we could claim all of ours under the lost revenue.
Correct.
Right. So Brett, if you have ideas that you want to put on, if you can send them to Dave and the mayor and I, to kind of CC all of us, we can, you know, schedule a meeting for whoever you think we need to bring in to talk about whatever items you have.
Okay. I mean, I was just thinking about what, some of the other things that we had in that matrix that we had in our initial committee of the whole discussion. But were, they were just, they were put on there, but we knew that, at least at that point, we weren't allowed to do that. But now it seems some of those might be. So I don't know if we revisit some of those initial thoughts that we had.
If it would be helpful, we can email you out the matrix again.
Sure.
And we can, we can email you the one where we kind of went into the breakout rooms and we had the priorities. That's not to say we can't change them because things do change. But at least you'll know where we ended as a reminder. And I see Alder Person Lagaki has her hand up.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that matrix, and I'm not able to see the ranking, the ranking materials. And I sort of have some slightly different recollections than those five high-level points that were in the presentation. So I'd really be interested in looking at that information. And yes, we are. We have taken our time in getting this money received and spending it. And yeah, I'm a little hesitant to go forward on any big projects because I kind of want to reappoint myself. Not that we need big meetings again, but I'd like to relook at that data, and in the matrix, I don't see the ranking information.
There's multiple tabs on there, and I can take a look again.
Yep, we'll get that sent out to everyone so you have it. And then if there's, we'll have to prioritize the presentations because there'll be at least a half a dozen or more. And some of that will be based on availability of the presenters, but we'll be working on that. Alder Person, highly?
It does sound like this real change opens up opportunities for us to spend on environmental goals more so than our previous discussion. more so than our previous discussion thought. I think it would be definitely useful to, definitely worthwhile to consider how we can spend it in ways that can help us preserve our environment. For example, the Sustainability Committee, if we can, if we can get a quorum during the absence of a couple of our members, we'll be trying to get a, trying to secure some funding for community feedback and for a survey. Probably in upcoming months.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, the D E I, they're also looking at some things. And at this point, really, our option would be to wait until next year, which doesn't sound very advantageous, or do a budget amendment. So there might be an opportunity to look at those as options. So those are the types of things that we can still add. You know, we haven't allocated hardly any of it yet. So if you have other ideas, I think maybe just send them to Dave, so we can have them all in one place. And then we can add them on to maybe another tab on to the matrix at some point with the new, the new proposals.
I guess the question also to the council is, before, before we have presentations, do you want another committee of the whole meeting to go over the matrix again? And categorize things as, you know, because things may have changed and information may be different than what we had almost a year ago? I mean, would you want that? That we could schedule another committee of the whole meeting to re-rank ideas? I mean, we're trying to make this efficient, but yet, you know, inclusive of people's ideas. And, you know, we have $1.2 million to try to spend. And, you know, how do we want to go forward?
I think that would be the wisest choice, is to at least have one more meeting. Give us a couple, you know, a week or so to think about if we have any other thoughts or possibilities before we do, before we get into presentations and that. So we can verify that those are our priorities in there. Or if some, based on those rule changes, that we have some new potential areas that we could explore that we didn't think were possible before.
Or on the flip side, does presentations help identify, understand fully where the money would be spent? I mean, that's another twist. I mean, do we have the presentations and then reconvene and prioritize? I'm just kind of throwing out as another option to better understand where the money could be spent. Is it better to understand where, what is actually being proposed?
Do we have some presentations lined up?
I think we could line up some on short notice. We're just kind of waiting to see what kind of direction that we receive tonight. If you want us to do presentations, we can. If you want to do a committee of the whole first, you can. If you want us to do presentations at the committee of the whole, we could do that as well. So we're just kind of looking for some direction. And, and, you know, it won't be long, we'll be in a budget time. So I'm guessing if we don't get it done in the next couple of months, it's probably going to be late fall into winter before we get back to it realistically. And, you know, I, I don't know if some of the initiatives that were even brought up tonight really want to wait that long.
My preference would be to have one more meeting, committee of the whole meeting, before any presentations. I don't want to waste anybody's time or effort in assembling these if we ultimately decide like, no, that's, that's no longer our priorities. So just so that we're not wasting anybody's time for that. And we can all align what our priorities are based on the new rules.
Is that kind of the consensus of the group?
I would agree with that.
Sure.
Okay. So how long would you guys need to submit new ideas? A week, two weeks?
Weeks, I think it'd be reasonable.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Brett.
Two weeks, I think, would be reasonable.
All right. Does that sound good to everybody? We'll, we'll send out a date with the matrix, kind of a date to submit your ideas. And then we'll, we'll figure out a potential day for the committee of the whole. That'll be obviously after that deadline. And we'll, we'll begin the discussions then.
It'll take us all two weeks to get through that 151 pages of rules.
I would, I would focus on the matrix. That's not quite that many pages, but it is growing.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on this one? All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And it looks like we have a few items in there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hunt. Would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Item number six is Resolution 113 of 2022, and this is coming from Stoughton Utilities. And somebody help me remember who's our utilities rep. Is that?
I think it's Fred.
That was Fred.
I just seen that the other day.
Yeah. It's my short-term memory going on here. So that, I'll put that up, and then you can introduce that.
Okay.
Let's see. And here it is. Alder Person Hunt?
I'm afraid I can't see it.
Oh.
I can see the, the screen with all our pictures.
How's that?
There we go. Let's see. Authorizing the release of the platted public utility easement on Lot 8 of Greek Edition to... Wait a minute. I have to go over here and blot it out a little bit. To the Greek Edition to Norseview Heights, that 1617 Johnson Street, recorded as document number 2038870, Dane County Registry. And I recommend that we adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alder Person Jensen has a second. And Alder Person Hunt, would you like to explain this one? And I know Director Weiss can back you up if you need help.
Yeah. As I understand it, there is a 12-foot easement that runs the full length of the east property boundary. And there's a 6-foot easement that runs along the south property boundary, and that's what we're concerned with primarily. And there hasn't been any recent use of those, to the best of my understanding. But I would let Jill explain that completely.
Thank you. When we do, when subdivisions are platted, we actually put on the easements or require the easements that we think that were going to utilize ultimately for construction. So we applied these easements in the back lot lines, thinking that's where we'd ultimately install the electric infrastructure. In the end, we actually installed it on the public right-of-way. This applicant or property owner came forward at 1617 Johnson Street and was requesting to have these easements removed. We did a review. We had legal take a look at it, or the attorney take a look at it as well. And we have no concerns with it whatsoever. We will not be using these easements if we ever do reinstall electric there for some reason. If we need to put it underground again, we'll be utilizing the right-of-way. So this meets all of our requirements as we've kind of put forward to be able to release these easements. And so we do recommend that they are released.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I did have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alder Person Schumacher.
Director Weiss, did the, how did the property owner? I'm assuming that they may have just been thinking about this. Did they, did they have like a specific plan for what they were going, needed that easement cleared for? Or did they not even discuss what their possibilities were?
They actually approached this about five years ago or so, based on, you know, utility recollection, and was looking to ultimately put a fence in. They since have had three boys. I guess the oldest one is four years old, and so they are looking to fence the backyard. We don't have a use for these easements anymore, so we do a ordinance that requires that the fence would be placed outside of the easement. And so that's why they're seeking to have this easement removed.
Okay, thanks. They're, they're in my district here, so I just wanted to get a, a little bit of background understanding as to what they were looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is coming from Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
Thank you, Mayor. R 114, 2022, the First Amendment to Agreement to Undertake Development with R O B Real Estate Brokerage and Builders LLC for Parker Coal Edition. And I so moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right. This is, again, this is the Isham Street Extension Development that we have been working at. And this is similar to the resolution that we had the last time as part of the developers' agreement, where we were initially requiring the, the professional liability insurance coverage. And we released that from the DeVorak Development. And then, so this is exactly the same thing as that. It's similar language and everything to that developers' agreement. And this came through Finance earlier today.
All right. Any questions or comments? Anything you want to add, Tony Dragon?
No.
Pretty much self-explanatory.
Yep.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is Resolution 115 of 2022. This is the resolution authorizing the use of the ARPA funds for the Innovation Center. And I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Gary and Katrina to introduce this and then see, you know, what the preference of the council would be on this particular item. Go ahead, Gary. If you need to screen, you can be shared.
Yeah, that's okay. The, we just have the resolution to consider. The Innovation Center is applying for, I should say, reapplying for the same grant that we applied for last spring and did not receive. It was a grant to the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. Our grant request was $650,000, I think. This, this time around, we'll be requesting, we'd like to request more money if we could. But at the moment, we have $250,000 in committed match. The grant requires a 50% matching fund, so we can apply for up to $750,000. We have, we currently have $250,000 to match that. So the Innovation Center Board is requesting the council support the project by allocating $250,000 in ARPA funds to be used as match for the other $250,000 that we have, so that we could apply for $500,000 in BDA funding with $500,000 in matching funds. That is a million dollars to help with the startup of the Innovation Center. And these funds cannot be used for construction or hard costs. It's, it's, these funds are intended for, it can be used to purchase equipment, to hire staff, to pay for programming, and that kind of thing, which is really where we need funding, even more so than a building. If you have any, answer any questions? Oh, the grant application is due June 13th, so there is some, there is a deadline to this. If the council decides not to support it at this time, then we would submit a grant application with the match that we currently have, $250,000. So we would be asking for another $250,000 for a $500,000 project.
Alder Person Hunt?
If we don't receive the grant again this time around, and we committed our $250,000 from the city, would that $250,000 then be free of commitment if we don't get that grant?
I believe so. The, although I believe the Innovation Center Board would like that, the city to support the startup of the Innovation Center, whether or not other grant funds were received.
Right. Understood on that. But if we didn't get the grant, then the commitment, as far as it being matching funds, we would have the option of maybe altering that amount of money or something?
Correct. Correct. You know, it would be nice to have a standing commitment, so if we, we expect to continue to apply for grants, and they all require matching funds. So, you know, we could come back to the council each time or, you know, designate an allocation now that we can keep using until we actually hit something.
Any other questions from council members?
What kind of detail do we have in the proposal for the Innovation Center at this point?
We actually have a lot of detail. We've got a five-year operating pro forma. We're working on building out our budget for the programming. We've got a, a budget for a building. We've got a $5 billion budget for a building that we are requesting money from the state of Wisconsin for. We should hear about that next month in June sometime.
Any other?
Gary, you have it? Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you. I was wondering, how are the, the other locations throughout the county that are working to do like their satellite portion of the Innovation Center system? How are they faring on their projects?
Okay. One Key has moved, has made a decision. They were considering using their current village hall as an, as an innovation center, as a kind of an arts and creativity-based innovation center. But they made the decision to use the old library next to the high school for that purpose, which connects with their fab lab and create, you know, makes better use of the space, I guess, for, for that type of use. So they're moving forward with that idea. They haven't received significant funding at this point either. But there's a lot of things in the works right now around these ideas that I think we'll see a lot of movement in the near future.
President Hirsch, did you have a comment?
I was just, for the, I guess, it's a million dollars that you're actually requesting, right?
We have a million dollars of programming we'd like to get covered. We're asking for $500,000 in funding from BDA. And then we have, we're hoping to have $500,000 of matching funds.
Right. So it'd be a million total. Do you have like a breakdown of where the money would actually go? I know you say programming and staff. And I know you had that previously for the previous grant. I was just wondering if you have that handy, just for me being a visual person, to see how that million dollars is broken up into how it would be spent?
We don't have the, all the programming out. I mean, we've got the staffing part of it. I mean, we've got the staffing part of it pretty well set. Um, we're still meeting with like Madison College. Part of the programming we, we're wanting to build out is this digital credentialing, where, uh, we can bring Madison College in, work with our local employers, and, um, develop, um, credentialing around specific skills and tasks that, uh, employers need people to do. Uh, so that would include training on equipment or, um, or processes, or, um, or specific tasks that, uh, employers have. Um, so that's, that's one we're currently working on. Um, we've got some other ideas that haven't been fully explored yet, so I don't want to get into, uh, into a, a lot on that. But there are some, um, interesting things that the board is discussing.
So with that said, Gary, and I, I know we have, uh, the matching from Wallene Foundation, and as other big businesses in Stone are gonna benefit from the Innovation Center, are, have they been approaching, I'm sure you have approached them, for other, uh, funding or earmarks for the Innovation Center because they're gonna benefit from the certifications, or?
Yeah, we actually have, we have a lot of other funds that are hanging out there that, uh, uh, different foundations have expressed interest in contributing, but they're not ready to jump in until they see other people chucking in. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg. If we, if, if we could get a grant, then they would contribute, but they're not gonna commit matching funds before we get the grant. So it's kind of a chicken and egg with both, with that, uh, situation. Um, uh, you know, the, um, the Rotary has been talking about the contribution, and I think they will make one. But again, they need to, I think we're looking for some momentum around the idea.
And then also Regina, um, the, uh, some of the other businesses, uh, have participated in our meetings. And we, we did a tour of the Innovation Center in Janesville, and I believe we had somebody from Munroil there, and we've had conversations with Zalk Josephs. Um, we're getting a lot of feedback, as you might imagine, from, uh, human resources departments in these bigger organizations, smaller ones too, actually, um, because of the labor crunch. And not only for recruiting labor, but really the skills they need in those working environments. And that's kind of really the main focus of the Innovation Center.
Yeah, and those major employers have already committed to, um, funding on an annual basis of twenty-five thousand dollars per year for, to help the operations and, um, ongoing programming.
So they're looking actually to the city before other people commit to see, make sure that the city is committed to this endeavor too. And, and with that said, are you anticipating coming back to the city for more money in the future? Or is this like, if you get some of the, uh, ARPA funds, that would be our, our commitment?
Well, I can't speak for the Innovation Center Board and what they might do in the future, but at this point, we're focused on the startup, and this is what we're, we would be looking for, for the startup.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be is to someday get to a position where we're sustainable, and that's what we saw when we were in Janesville, for example. And I know there's other ones, Gary, that have, have gotten to that point. I'm not sure how long it's taken them all to get there, but I think ultimately that's the goal.
It takes about five years for these types of operations to become stabilized and be, uh, self-sustaining.
Alder Person Legaki?
I think that this is a worthy project. Um, though I wish the timing of this next granting cycle was in June thirteenth. Um, because of the specific pot of money that we're looking at was originally intended for ARPA funds. In my recollection of, the Innovation Center was brought up, but it did not rate very highly back then. Um, but I, things are different. It's a year later, and you have this timing. But I, um, when I think about what these monies are meant to really do, um, I think that this would be helpful. But, um, I, I really feel that to use twenty percent of our monies at this project without us having discussions, i- it's a timing issue for me, and I realize you have a deadline, but, but I, I might be apt to table this, given that we just want to have more discussions, and I realize that you have a deadline and you've needed to bring this forward. But that is some of the thinking that, that I have going on in my head.
Hey, Gary, I'm wondering if, if we were to apply for a lesser amount now, could we reapply for more later, you think?
Uh, oh, yeah, there, and there will be other, uh, funding opportunities. There's a, just a boatload of programming coming down, or funding coming down the line for these types of things. And, um, so, uh, don't feel bad because of the timeframe. I understand the situation the council's in, and, um, trust me, we'll be back. If you don't, uh, if the timing's not right, we'll be back when the timing is right.
Alder Person Hunt?
I was wondering, uh, the stated amount of two hundred and fifty thousand probably, uh, was based on finding that full matching amount for the five hundred thousand. But could we do something like, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand, and then you apply for a little lesser amount?
Um, sure, it's, it's up to you, and, um, you know, like I say, anything that you, you are, uh, are able to provide would be greatly appreciated by the, for the Innovation.
Well, I, I would say that, uh, I would agree with Gene, that I really think this is a, uh, worthy project. Maybe didn't score quite as high as some other things in our matrix. But when we look at our concerns about things like workforce housing, um, we shouldn't overlook workforce training. Uh, this is really important to our workforce. Young people coming out of school, people who have lost jobs for whatever reason. Uh, this Innovation Center is where they would find either new skills or a match with an employer looking for the skills they have. It just seems to me like it would be a, a, a project that we, as the city, should want to help get off the ground. Uh, i- if the two fifty is too high, I would, you know, I think we could, what, maybe make an amendment and reduce it some? Cut it in half, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe? But I would like to, uh, think in terms of offering some support so that, uh, other donors can look at it and say, well, we can now get in. Cause they're kind of waiting for us to make a move on it, I think.
Right, so what I did is I did put the resolution on the screen that is written, and certainly if, if you wanted to consider changing the amounts, I think you could easily just tell us what you think would be appropriate. If you don't want to do anything, like Gary said, he'll be back at some point asking later. Um, so I guess it's really up to you guys where you want to go with this. Is there any other questions, I guess, before we get to a decision point, one way or another?
I'm willing to support Alder Hunt's, uh, proposal.
Anybody else?
I would, uh, support that, that amendment.
All right. Okay, so I think what we do is we just need a motion. Do we have to just change the numbers on the resolution?
I think someone did, yep.
So if you just want to make the motion, Fred, and just authorize the, the amount that you feel is appropriate, and then we can just change the numbers on the current resolution, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, I would, uh, move that we change the authorized amount to a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the two fifty.
All right, and do we have to change the five hundred, Gary, or do you think you might be able to fill the difference? Or is that even relevant?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that we'll be able to fill the difference. If we, if we don't, I mean, I would suggest leaving, or putting, dropping it to, uh, let's see, we'd have two fifty, three fifty, three seventy-five, and so that would be, uh, seven twenty-five would be the grant amount? Or the total amount with the match, I should say.
Seven fifty, maybe?
Yeah, seven fifty.
Right now it says five hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're, well, it, it, we can go up to seven fifty. But what the actual amount will be, we don't know at this point, because, um, like, uh, Alder Hunt said, that there could be more money coming in, so I'd be hesitant to put in a, a set amount in there. That might be less than what we actually have.
So?
Just take out the five hundred.
All right, so the city attorney suggested we just take out the five hundred thousand.
So we'd just say, um, build to scale grant proposal, and then delete in the amount of five hundred thousand.
Is that, uh, you think that'll work, Gary?
Yeah, I think that'll work great.
Okay, how's that sound, Fred, it's your motion?
Sure, no, sounds great, sounds good.
So we're gonna change the two fifty to one twenty-five, and we're gonna take out the five hundred thousand. You get that candy?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, great, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Schumacher. All right, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
Well, no, that motion does carry. All right, thank you, thanks, Gary, thanks, Katrina.
You're welcome.
Uh, next item is R one sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
Sorry, was that the vote on the amendment?
Yeah, we didn't have to do an amendment, we just changed the numbers on the actual resolution. There was no motion on the table to amend, so we just?
Okay.
Okay? All right, so the next one is R one sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this is coming from Public Works, and I think, um, our Public Works Chair is not here, and I don't know if our Vice Chair? Pardon me?
Fred's the Vice Chair.
Okay, thanks for that. How do you remember all this stuff?
It was just a couple days ago, so.
Yeah.
And I, it must be my short-term memory. All right, so this one is coming from, uh, Public Works, Alder Person Hunt.
Yes, this is the Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Director of Public Works to Submit an Application to the Greater Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, for Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG, Urban Funding for Projects Using Federal Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six Funding Under the New Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IIJA, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, BIL, BIL. That, the acronyms are fun, aren't they? So, um, I would recommend that, uh, we authorize Brett, I would move to authorize Brett to make the application for that grant.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's, uh, Legaki, or was it? Is that Alder Person Legaki?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry I couldn't see on my screen. Alder Person Hunt?
You know, I have to confess to being pretty much unclear. I know what we, uh, discussed made good sense, but I think it would be better if Brett went ahead and explained things.
Sure, no problem.
He's dying to do that, I know it.
Um, so this is the, the funds that everybody's been hearing about in the news over the last couple of years about infrastructure funding, uh, from the federal government. Uh, the state of Wisconsin is set to, to get around one point three billion dollars in funds uh, for, uh, road repair, bridge repair, and some other things. And that's gonna get distributed down to local governments, um, either by WISDOT or if you're part of a, an MPO, uh, which we are part of, of the Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, so we have to submit our, our grant application in the form of an STBG, uh, application to our MPO. Um, and then it is competitive with those within our MPO, so we are competing with, with Madison, um, the Veronas and the Sum Prairies, I mean, those folks. Um, however, we're not competing with the whole state. Um, the one thing that is different is that the MPO, um, unlike the state, is only offering a sixty percent, uh, sixty forty split. So sixty percent of the, uh, funds from, uh, the MPO, uh, from the federal government will be from the MPO, and there's a forty percent local match. Uh, whereas the federal, uh, WISDOT, um, STBG is eighty twenty. So essentially, the MPO is looking at stretching their dollars farther, uh, which is, um, I guess, potentially good cause we could get something funded that may not have been. On the other hand, those projects that are funded won't be at sixty percent. So on your screen are the, the projects that we had identified. They are, uh, collector-level streets, which they have to be. Uh, these are also, uh, strong candidates to be funded, uh, through the program. Uh, we did meet with representatives from the MPO, uh, and WISDOT to make sure that our, our projects were viable, and we feel like these are, are strong candidates. Uh, just real quickly, won't go into detail on these, but we're gonna, uh, uh, submit application for Roby Road from Nygaard to Kings Lynn, uh, Race Track Road from Highway fifty-one to County Road A, uh, Nygaard from Jackson to just south of Buckingham, uh, Jackson Street, uh, which will have a multi-use path, uh, installed as well, uh, from Highway fifty-one to Kings Lynn, Lincoln from Highway B to Creedeman, uh, Creedeman from Lincoln to Norris Parkway, and then Forest Street, uh, from Milwaukee to Isham. Um, a lot of these are strategic in their, um, on where we place them or where we started and ended, uh, based on, um, different, uh, issues with, uh, parkland, um, areas, um, or the need to, um, acquire real estate. Um, so we feel like we have some strong candidates. I don't anticipate all of them getting funded. Um, however, I would hope that we, we do have a good shot at getting some. Any questions on, on that?
Uh, before you have any questions, I just want to take a second to thank, uh, Brett for his leadership on this. Pretty short window to turn this around. Um, Brett and Rodney and Jill, uh, got together to, to work on things to kind of prioritize and, and make sure that the projects that we selected, uh, not only had the emphasis in mind, but they were actually doable, given the short turnaround, especially when it comes to utilities that can be a little bit, uh, complicated when we're putting these together. Anything you want to say on that, Brett?
Yeah, uh, I certainly didn't do this all alone. Uh, Jill's on the line, and she was a big part of this, of course, Rodney, um, our partner is at Strand. Um, and there is a, a pretty tight window to turn this around. It's, it's due, uh, June third. I've already got a good start on it. Um, so I was hoping you'd say yes, or will say yes tonight, so I've put a lot of time and effort into it already. Um, I, I think they're obviously a, a good, uh, value to the community. Um, but there are some, some strings attached with, with any grant that we have to, to abide by. That's more administratively that we have to work through. Uh, but I think, uh, in the, in the end, uh, sixty percent, uh, is, is sixty percent. So this is, uh, millions of dollars worth of, of, uh, funding that we could be bringing in. Uh, final totals I'll have by the end of the week, um, on what we could, uh, potentially see, but it's gonna be in the millions of dollars.
Yeah, and I think that we were strongly encouraged by MPO to apply, being, you know, more, you know, outside of the Madison area. And interestingly enough, Alder Person Caravella told me the other day, there's a rumor that we might not be part of MPO forever, um, which came news to me because, um, I, I don't know if you want to explain that, Phil? You're more involved with that than I am, now that you're a member.
I'm not sure if I can explain it. I'm, to be honest with you?
I know I couldn't.
It, it, it was, it was a surprise to me, and I just kind of, it, it didn't make a lot. Something having to do with the formula from the census and the way that the feds figure out who's in MPOs based on population evidently, or some sort of breakdown of the population or census. Um, so we will know evidently sometime this summer whether we are still considered to be part of the MPO. It, it all seemed very odd to me. Um, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Um, so, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, although at, at the MPO meeting, my first one, one that I was at, they did say that they encourage more municipalities, you know, entities that are part of the MPO, to ask for grants and monies that are available, because it, it sounds like quite often, sometimes Madison simply by default, uh, qualifies or gets more grants, because other places simply don't know they're available, or don't go through the process to apply, or whatever reason. So, we'll find out sometime in the coming months whether we still get to be part of the MPO. I'm hoping that we do, so we'll find out.
I think Brett, Brett has some insight on that as well.
Yeah, just, just to tag along on that, that um, that decision will be after the deadline, so we're still a part of the MPO when it comes to applying for the S T B G grant, so there's no getting out of it. Um, there's some, some extra paperwork that we have to do, or extra, extra application that we actually have to do as part of the MPO, um, so it, you know, it is what it is. Um, they may be oversimplifying the application process in your, your meetings, Phil. Uh, they're oftentimes a little more convoluted than what they may lead on, um, and sometimes we don't qualify for certain grant opportunities like a Madison Mae, uh, but we certainly will, will take a look at that. We've had a few talks with um, um, the folks at the MPO about some opportunities in the future, however, if we're not a part of that, then uh, we won't qualify for the MPO-type grant, however, there's other grants in the state that we can apply for.
All right, thanks for all that information. Uh, maybe too much for some people, but it, it's kinda good to know what's going on.
This, this has been a long time coming, so it's, it's nice, it's finally here, however, these deadlines are tight.
Any questions or comments from elders? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. Um, it looks like the next items are potential for closed session. Um, I guess, how do we wanna handle these, Matt?
So there are three items that uh, are on the agenda for a potential closed-session discussion, assuming um, the council decides that it's appropriate to discuss all three items in closed session. I think the easiest way to proceed is for there to be a motion to move into closed session. I can help describe the legal basis for the closed session, because there are two different um, rationales that are in play, as I recall. Um, and, and then there would be a vote on going into closed session. We'd have the closed-session discussion, um, and then uh, it's, depending on what happens in closed session, we may either simply adjourn from closed session, or the council may decide to reconvene in open session and, and take action if, if there's any action to be taken.
I just noticed there's actually two of each, so there's four.
All right, you might close out.
Starts with, yes, there's, there's two of each. I, I, initially I thought there was three as well.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, starting from eleven.
Eleven, twelve, and thirteen, right?
And fourteen.
And ten.
Ten.
Oh, ten?
Ten is kinda...
Oh, I didn't realize that's closed.
Yeah, so there's four of them.
Okay, so, okay, four items.
Two of each.
Yep, and so, I guess, so if the, I think the first question is, um, i- i- whether the, I think maybe the way to handle this is kind of like a consent agenda. Does anyone uh, believe that any of these items should be discussed simply in cl- open session before we move into closed session? And if, if the, if uh, no one wants to start in open session on any of these, then my suggestion is there'd be a motion to move into closed session. Once that motion is made and seconded, I will describe the legal basis for moving into closed session.
So would... Now, do I need to uh, do I need to present at least the R-one-seventeen resolution, as that's the only one defined by a particular resolution?
You do not have to present a- anything at this point. So, the, the question is, do you or does anyone else want to begin the discussion of any of these items in open session before we go into closed session? And if no one wants...
I don't think we, I don't think we should, and, and I would make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
As the first one was discussed in Finance Committee, and we did go into closed session to discuss it, and so I believe that a motion to closed session is uh, the right way to go.
All right, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Johnson, and then Attorney Dregney.
So the legal basis to pursue, move into closed session for these four items, there would be two different legal bases for the closed session. Uh, two of the items, the, the, the reason for the closed session is for competitive and bargaining reasons, because the city is in a position of uh, potentially negotiating an agreement with another entity. Um, and then two of the items, um, the, the reason for the closed session is to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation. So those, those would be the legal bases for the closed session. Now there can be a roll call vote.
Whenever you're ready, Candy.
Okay, Kowski.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Legaki.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Nine elders in favor.
All right, just give us a moment, we'll be in the closed session, and then uh, Dave, you'll have to lock the meeting again, huh? And then we just gotta make sure Spencer's ready. We're good. All right, we're in open session, and then we have one item for consideration, and I think this has come from Alder Person Schumacher, is it? Or who's making the motion?
Could I ask, yeah, Alder Schumacher, could I ask that Dave uh, formulate a, a motion for you to consider, and then if it sounds right to you, that you offer that? Cause there's some changes that we've discussed in closed session to that resolution.
And I've actually got that on the screen for everybody to see.
Can you blow it up for him?
It, yep, it's on, I've shared my screen.
Yeah, can you enlarge it?
So the resolution that, that um, was in the packet is on the screen with some new language uh, shown in an underlined format. So the motion would be to adopt that resolution with the um, with the new underlined language included.
Can you see it, Brett?
I can see that, yep.
Okay.
But I don't need to read that as part of the resolution, is that correct?
Correct, the, the motion could simply be to adopt the resolution with the, with the new uh, language shown in an underlined format.
Got it. Um, all right, I think I'm ready for it. Um, so R-one-seventeen of twenty-twenty-two is a resolution refunding Askrove and purchase of Lot Four, C S M number one-fifty-three, sixty-three, located in the city of Stoughton, and as amended uh, in the underlying text presently shown on the screen. May I so move?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hunt, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Phil looks bored. None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, it was an interesting night, it was.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Night, all.